Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Education August 15, 2017 meeting to order at this point. Roll call please.
Pat Reschewski, President. David Schmidt.
You're here.
Brian Mahon.
Doug Houston.
President.
Brian Deason. President. Stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a virtue card today?
Sure.
Fantastic.
Integrity. Integrity is living by your highest values. It is being honest and sincere. Integrity helps you to listen to your conscience, to do the right thing, and to tell the truth. You act with integrity when your words and actions match. Integrity gives you self-respect and a peaceful heart. You're practicing integrity when you think about what virtues matter to you, stand up for what you believe in, do the right thing even when it is hard, willingly clean up your mistakes, think for yourself, and avoid temptation. Affirmation. I have integrity. I stand up for what is right. I mean what I say and say what I mean. I am my own leader.
Thank you very much. Board of Education Development Guidelines for how we'll conduct our business. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views even when views are not in line with all numbers, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Guidelines. At this point, I'd like to entertain any public comments.
We have, I'd like to introduce Anita Nakuioma, who is the Governance Council President for the Nacusa Community School. And she's just got some talking points, some updates for you.
Please excuse me if I stumble with my language. I'm not a very good public speaker.
Could you move to the left or your right just a little bit? There you go.
But he wanted to sit down. She can sit down otherwise.
There we go. You're fine.
I'm going to sit down.
Tell you did sit down all the best.
Well, first of all, I'm here on behalf of the Nacusa Charter School Board. We are looking to amend our contract between the Nacusa School Board and the Nacusa Community School, which hopefully the contract is going to be forthcoming. One of the things that we are going to try to offer is we would like to offer Ho-Chunk Language and Culture 1 and 2 this next school year. And the other thing is we have not matched a teacher with the Nacusa Community School.
Yeah, and the Nacusa Community School lead teacher position is a complex position where, you know, it requires a knowledge of project-based learning infusing the Ho-Chunk Language and Culture. And we've made some efforts to explore the candidate pool out there, and we haven't found a candidate that matches that. You know, and with the Ho-Chunk Language and Culture course offerings, that would be to students in AMX so that they would have an opportunity to still engage in that Ho-Chunk Language and Culture even though that the Nacusa Community School as it was in the past wouldn't exist for this upcoming school year as it had.
Thank you very much for your comments. And, you know, this is something that one of the public comments section does not really, a whole lot we can do with this. I believe it's most.
And this is just for information, you know, that Anita wanted to come and just give you kind of an update on what they're working on.
She's got a few more points, I think.
Sounds like you have a lot of passion for it, and I want to thank you for that.
Trying. Not that the passion isn't there, but.
Yeah.
One of the other things that we're going to try to do is to explore the possibility of experiences and partnership with the Nacusa School District to preserve the Ho-Chunk Language and Culture. And by that, even though we're not going to have the Nacusa Charter School, we would still like to offer the Language and Culture for all the students. I don't know about high school. We wanted to try to keep it like, you know, in the middle school right now. And then we are also going to look into the possibility of the Language and Culture teacher that we have right now to get his license in teaching general education, working with him with that because we have found that he is doing really well with the children that were at the charter school. And then last thing is we'll keep you updated on our efforts to achieve our mission, and we look forward to keeping our partnership with the Nacusa School District for the education of our students.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for sharing that with us.
Do we have any students that would be interested in the Nacusa School right now?
There would have been two students that would have been in the upcoming year.
But we don't even teach it.
Correct.
And the Ho-Chunk Language teacher is still with us, so we want to maximize his.
So if we find a teacher?
Talents.
I'm not sure that that's the direction that the board wants to go right now. With that, you know, they're looking at the best way to use the resources that they have. And so they're looking at exploring some other options for that.
Which we'll get on an upcoming agenda.
And we don't even know all those options. They're just trying to explore other ways to reach that mission.
Okay.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
You did well.
We don't want to drop this. Any good calls?
Thank you very much, Anita. You do have passions.
Well, thank you for hearing me tonight, and hopefully, you know, I'll be back again, you know. Well, I'm sure I'll be back again and that we can, you know, pursue this relationship that we've built, you know, between the charter school and the school district. I know it's all for one good thing, you know, not our children.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you very much.
I'm still nervous.
It's nice to have public comments.
Yes.
That's generally a quiet period, so we welcome that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay if you'd like to. We like an audience. But you don't have to. It's up to you.
I have to get ready to go play softball.
Hang on to them. Thanks, Anita. Well, we're going to move on. Showcasing schools and student learning are three. We're going to be looking at a CWSA update.
So we had our meeting last night, and I got elected by Clint to come. Give you guys an update.
Nice job, Clint.
Well, I'd like to introduce Wendy Brunn, too. She is our treasurer on the CWSA Governance Council, and she has been on since May and has brought some new ideas, a new light, and method of organization to the Governance Council. So go ahead, Wendy.
Good, bad, or indifferent? All right, so last night we talked through, the staff basically gave us a bunch of updates about things that they're looking at for the new school year. One of those was a standard tracking sheet and learning profile that they're establishing based on some visits that they've done in Fond du Lac. And what it will be is essentially a spreadsheet that will live with that child, that student, for the three years that they're able to stay within the STEM Academy. And it will track what their objectives essentially are around, you know, the types of things that we need to meet from an education standpoint and be able to use that during the PLP conversations between the staff and the student they're targeting every other week to really make the student kind of take ownership for the type of learning that they're getting, how they're incorporating that learning and those objectives into their projects and making sure that they're meeting all of the requirements between the fifth grade, the sixth grade, and the seventh and eighth grade. So I did, I just, you guys can pass this around. The discussion last night was really around kind of looking at that spreadsheet and then talking about ideas around how we could make that into our SLLs for this coming school year. So if there's any questions on that?
What's a PLP discussion?
They basically, I think of it, I don't know what it stands for, but the way I think of it as a parent is really like I would have as a one-on-one with my associate at work where I'm having a conversation to say, this is what you're doing well. What do you think you're doing well? This is where we think you can use some improvement. This is where you're falling behind the mark, and those are those conversations.
And PLP is Personalized Learning Plan, you know, which is, I think it's number two on plan on the page and really looking at personalized learning as far as an individual tracking and plan for how the student is going to accomplish those standards.
And one of the benefits, I think, of the new spreadsheet is just having it all in one place. So instead of having, you know, our star and our math scores and the reading scores in one place and then going someplace else for Alex's math, and that spreadsheet pulls everything together, and it will just stay with the student to be able to see how the student's growing.
Did you state how often this discussion would take place with them?
Minimum of every other week. That's the target. I mean, they're really wanting to do them every week, but we'll have to see how this year goes with the.
Yeah, the reason I ask is you've got this, you know, your thing, your chart is monthly. And I'm just wondering how often it was, but good. Okay. I must apologize for not attending Monday's meeting.
That's okay. It was a good one. We had a good time. I mean, we had a lot of good discussion about what the upcoming year is going to bring. The other thing that we wanted to bring to the board's attention is really, we also are looking at some contract amendments, mostly based on clarification. So I think when that contract was originally set up, the STEM school was operating in different, kind of under different capacity, different limitations, different, you know, it started with the grant. As we've been working through some of the things that either we need to do because we're at 35 and two for staff, or that we want to do, and we're re-reviewing the contract and the bylaws, we're finding that the contract has some things that just need to be clarified. One of them was, you know, we have a waiting list. The contract says that it has to be picked by lathering, and it indicates current student has some kind of advantages to that process, but there's no definition of what current means. So last night we asked, and like four of us came up with different answers. So just some, you know, we'll submit that from a management standpoint and work with you guys to work through any of that. I don't think there's anything big coming, just really clarification on terms.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up to the plate to serve on that council and as treasurer to dig into these things.
And Lynn has been very patient with me, so I tried to do the treasurer's job.
You know, we need more people like you that are willing to step up and fill these roles. The stewardship and guidance of that school is a huge responsibility, so thank you very much.
And she's taking it to heart, so.
Yeah, we're going to be an exciting year.
Fantastic. That's what I want to hear.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, maybe very.
Yes, I have to go to the bookshelf. Just now. Oh, thanks.
Do we want to move to wellness policy?
That would be great. I bet Cody would love that.
Yeah. We'll shoot this off.
Lynn, are you okay with that?
Oh, I'm fine. That's fine.
Thank you. We're going to jump right to you, Cody. And this is a wellness policy update.
Right. The first thing that we're passing on here is not the actual policy. It's not even a fourth of our policy, but it's just some things I'm going to hit on today. Before I start, I just wanted to introduce myself. I am the Health and Wellness Director for the Nacusa School District. My biggest background is in nutrition. I have a bachelor's in exercise science and a master's in nutrition. I'm a product of Nacusa. I grew up here, lived here all my life, was an athlete, graduated from Nacusa High School. I then graduated with my master's. I wanted to come back here to the district and be a role model to the community and the students of health and nutrition. There's nothing more that I care about than the health of my community, school, and those around me. With that initiative and the day of my hire, I've been working for months on making our school and district the healthiest in Wisconsin. Today, I'm happy to announce that I have won a Healthy School Award for our district. There are three levels, a bronze, a silver, and a gold, and I won a gold award for our district. With that gold award, we are one out of eight schools in the whole entire state of Wisconsin. And being a gold winner recognizes you in the state of Wisconsin for monetary funds for our district. With that interview, they said the main reason was for the winning of the award was due to my nutrition. The advances I've made in the district the past five, six, seven months is what helped us be recognized for the gold award. Most school districts take three years to win the award. It only took me five months. I'm very proud to accomplish this and given the opportunity to change the culture of Nacusa's community. This is something that I take to heart, nutrition and wellness in our community and school districts. So I'm proud to be a part of our community and school district and to bring in this new recognition to our school district. Any questions on the school award, anything like that?
Cody, I'm just curious, and I'm sure the board is too. What were some of the questions or some of the benchmarks that you had to?
The biggest factor is nutrition because it affects everything from your health to going to the doctor, your wellness, school lunch program. So the biggest decision that they made for us to win the gold award in regards to silver and the bronze was that I helped the school district lose over 900 pounds in five months. So that was a huge deciding factor, and also my work with the athletes, like the wrestling team, stuff like that. So that was a huge factor with our faculty and employee wellness. And then since we've won this award, if my work does continue, we will be eligible for a national award with more monetary funds and recognition come this fall. So I wanted to share that in regards to my work in wellness before I got into the wellness policy today. Okay. I'll have you guys turn to pass the cover page here. I wanted to go over our mission and vision. Our mission for the wellness policy is to become the healthiest school district in the state of Wisconsin. Winning the national award will make us super, super close to that. So that's very exciting that we're really, really close to obtaining a goal here. Our vision is to provide a happy and healthy environment that cultivates maximum community, student, and staff potential. Well, I just have some duties of our committee. I spent probably about a good six months upon my hire reviewing the wellness policy pros, cons, things going good, things not going good. When I was actually recruiting for faculty and community members to be on the committee, I wanted to make sure that they were as passionate as I was, someone that wasn't going to give up after a month or two, someone that really wanted to stay with the plan and help this new pioneer in nutrition and wellness to put this girl. So those first five, six months, I did a lot of recruiting, talking to community members, faculty, and who would fit, you know, for that. We ended up recruiting about 30 people. We currently have 12 staff members for the wellness committee and two students. We pick two juniors or seniors each year to have a say in health and wellness and nutrition. So those duties of the wellness committee is to be a role model and advocate in the community and schools in regards to health and wellness. What we do is we review and assess the local wellness policy. We are currently reviewing the policy. It's, you know, five or six years old before I took this position. So right now, we've been meeting once a month, and we typically do meet once a month to review it. And now that we're halfway through reviewing it towards, I'd say towards the end of the first semester of the school year, we'll be implementing new ideas and stuff to make our school district healthier. We also assess the current policy from physical, environmental, and sustainability. I work a lot with the gym teachers, Chef Matt on our lunch program. Currently, I'm working with Chef Matt on putting in the calories and macronutrients for our lunch program as protein, carbs, and fats to help our high school students make more healthier choices so they know what they're putting into their bodies. That's just an example of what we've been doing there. And then we're engaging in development and communication plans with coalitions and community stakeholders. I've been working with Aspiris, the YMCA, and hoping to engage with Marshfield Clinic somewhere down the road with their, you know, weight loss, diabetes, stuff like that, and prevention for the younger kids as they come up and do their grade levels here. And then we'll continue to inform and update the public about the content, information, and assessments of the wellness policy. And then the last one here is we're going to put those wellness policies into action. Any questions on this part or the recruitment process or missions or visions? Are we continuing? So for our wellness policy, we have five guidelines. We have the initial wellness policy, the curriculum, nutrition standards, the nutrition guidelines, and then the non-food service guidelines. So inside each of these five guidelines here are all the goals that we want to hit. So we have, you know, the nutrition guidelines, the public development, and then the establishment of a plan, which we all have here. And then for the school, we have our nutrition education, our FIAED. We have the five components of that FIAED, the physical, the BMI, endurance, stuff like that. And then we also have the proper medical documentation for those participating in those classes. Nutrition standards, we're still working on here. We have the school lunch programs, the income eligibility, the barcode system, agriculture. And then what we're trying to do right now with this coming school year is to encourage more nutrient-dense foods with our school lunch program and making healthy posters and really trying to get anything from our athletes to our community members and school members to encourage healthy. And it's going to be, it's a work in progress, but it's going along very smoothly there, so. And part of that work in progress with the school lunch programs is following the USDA guidelines. We follow all of that. There's always new things coming in and old things coming out. So Chef Matt and I are just staying on top of that and keeping with this incoming school year is really putting in more nutrient-dense foods for the guidelines there. And some of those guidelines are just 10% total calories from trans fat, which are your bad fats, and then your total calories from fat. So we're going to want some bad fats and some healthy fats in there to make that 10 to 30%. And then we have some exempt here, like nuts and seeds. A lot of students are allergic to those, so we're not going to implement any of those into our school lunch programs. And then with our community gardens, you know, we really want to implement fresh whole foods when it's feasible and available to us, along with pharma school, which is something that I'd like to work on more this coming year as well. And then we have our non-food service guidelines. So this will be stuff for like football games, track meets. The vending machines are off during the day, competitive price, the healthy versus unhealthy. So hopefully somewhere down the road, a Kit Kat bar will be, you know, a lot more money than a banana or an apple to help, you know, make someone choose a healthier choice. And then, you know, we have the low-fat milk in our school district. Candy is obviously off limits during teaching hours. And then when it comes to fundraising alternatives, I know the soccer team already is implementing healthier choices. You know, we got nut packs and cranberries and healthy alternatives to that rather than selling pizza or cookie dough. So there's some more things that we're working on here. Like I said, you know, we talked about the five components, and right now I'm really working hard with Chef Matt on the nutrition guidelines with the lunch menu right now. The wellness policy here is a work in progress, and like I said, we're halfway through on completing the actual assessment, and work will be implemented more as the school year comes. So there's a lot of exciting things happening with the wellness policy. So did anybody have any questions on our actual policy? Again, this is just not even a fourth of our actual policy. I just wanted to give you guys the main points that we offer here in regards to my position.
I don't have any questions, Cody, but you've done a lot of work here, a lot of good work.
Yeah, it's been a challenge, but it's exciting work for me because I'm just really passionate about nutrition and health. So I don't even consider it as a job because it's so much, you know, so much fun for me, so.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Can you give just a snapshot of your work, you know, over the summer?
Yeah.
And that certainly ties in here.
Sure. Over the summer, I worked with over 70 kids for speed and agility, nutrition classes, strength and conditioning, putting on a lot of size on our football players, wrestlers, increasing speed for, you know, track athletes, football athletes. And I also did a adult enrichment class a couple of months ago, and with the community members in there, they lost over 120 pounds as well, too. So what I really strive to do is to reduce the prevalence of obesity in overweight individuals in our community and school district. So I like to, with my background in nutrition, I like to really put that knowledge and education out there to help our community, athletes, and students, faculty, you know, lose weight. Because if you lose weight or, you know, become more healthier, your work gets better, your students are more alert in class, you're more confident, and it's just, you're just a better person, I believe. You know, so all the work that I do is, you know, has, I put all my heart into my work because I'm working with everybody, and it just turns their health around, so.
Did you want to mention the picnic?
Oh, yeah. And then I'm also working on the school picnic, which is the 28th of this month. Katie Peters and I are working on, working with Chef Matt on making it another health and wellness picnic. We're going to do, we're going to try to find an alternative, a mix between, you know, fun food like your brass, and then there's going to be an alternative, a healthy option, too. And then we're trying to put like healthy baskets together for a raffle and give away like a Fitbit or something like that, too. I really want to like put a twist on it with, you know, the baskets and having individuals raffling for baskets they'd like to ring in more of a crowd and to keep things healthy and fun and active for our school leadership because I feel like a change is ready for Nacusa. And I feel like with my position, I'm able to make this change happen, and I figured, you know, why wait? Why start making these changes now? So that's kind of the push that I like to put into my work with all the stuff that I do here, so.
The picnic is on August 28, and all board members are invited from 4 to 6 at Riverside.
Riverside. So maybe you'll pick up some healthy hints from Cody down there. A little like, or a brat.
Or a brat.
Cody, on that duties of committee, that the bullet aid in program and curriculum evaluation oversight through?
Through WELSET.
What is WELSET?
That is like a computer program that helps you evaluate if you got stuck and didn't know where to go with your wellness community, it gives you tips on where to go. So it gives you evaluation tips you could use if you were at a bump in the road and didn't know where to go, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody, very much.
Thank you, guys.
Very good work. Okay, we're going to move on to operational expectations and monitoring tools.
Approve of them.
Yep. I'm sorry, Lynn.
That's okay.
I want to step back and go back to the approval of the 2017, 2018 school nutrition milk bid.
Yep, this is an annual item that the school board, well, it doesn't have to approve, but we would like it to approve. Each year, we send out bids to vendors, and we advertise in the Wisconsin Rapids Tribune. We ask for bids to bid on our milk, and that's a requirement by the state. Typically, we only receive one bid back, and again, that was no different this year. We received one bid from Dean Foods. Prices are a bit higher, but, I mean, there's really no other options for us. So I'm asking that the board approve the 2017-18 milk bid and award it to Dean Foods of Wisconsin.
Some move.
Thank you. Roll call. Right there, roll call. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Lynn. Now, we're on to operational expectations and monitoring tools, OE3, treatment of stakeholders. Uh, this is part of our policy governance model, and the treatment of stakeholders, this, this policy is, is really lies with the district administrator, and it, the statement, guiding statement is, "The administrator shall maintain a district culture that treats all stakeholders with respect, dignity, and courtesy." Um, the interpretation is the district administrator will manage information in such ways that confidential information is protected, effectively handle complaints, and maintain a district culture that values differences of opinion, reasonably includes people in decisions that affect them, and provides open and honest communication and written and interpersonal interaction. Focuses on common achievement of the board results policies, and maintains an open, responsive, and welcoming environment. Um, this is a policy that, that the board and I actually discussed in our Thursday meeting, and, you know, there's some real strengths and weaknesses. And Terry gave a lot of reflection on, you know, how, what his responsibilities within our district and the culture and, you know, the stakeholders that, you know, range from our community members, our students, our teachers. And, you know, during that discussion, Terry made a comment that really kind of stuck with me, and it's something that I, I just kind of like to mention, um, that, you know, he, you know, his responsibilities, um, are to all stakeholders, and he needs, you know, to, to understand the community, understand the teachers, and, you know, shift the focus and, and respond. And there are some real strengths in that reflection, and, you know, Terry or any of the board members, I don't know if you have any comments on the strengths that you found in that area? I think it was a really strong policy.
Well, I think I, I'd have to say, we'll point back to that, maintains a district culture that values individual differences of opinion. I think through conversations that I've had with people, you know, uh, I, I often hear that people don't feel like perhaps the district, uh, values those individual differences of opinion. So that's a, a real area, so whether you see it as a, as a, as a strength or weakness, a strength is that we are really trying hard to work on that. So, and I think that's what you're referring to.
That's kind of what I'm trying to get to, yeah, and, you know, the, the reflection and the, and the, you know, the actual information and substantiation of, of, you know, how you're satisfying us is, is to be commended. Um, and at this point, um, I would, you know, based upon the information and the board discussions, the board finds itself to be in full and complete compliance, and at this point, um, I'd like to, there's a motion on the floor for approving the board district operational expectation OE3. Is there any other comments from the board members that you'd like to bring out?
No, well, this, this was a pretty thorough policy, and, um, we had a good conversation last week about it, so.
Yeah, I think so. And I think, you know, we talked about putting down strengths and weaknesses. I think it's been captured in the evidence of compliance, so I think that can be cited in that.
Absolutely.
Our ongoing documentation, yep.
Okay, motion on the floor.
So what would you, you may, I'll second it.
Okay, motion by, huh? Or, you know, it's our boss, we'll second. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, the next policy we have is B/SR3, staff accountability. Um, the policy statement, "As the board's solely to district operations, the district administrator has exclusive authority over staff and has exclusive right to delegate that authority. Staff are accountable only to the district administrator and to prospective supervisors as determined by the district administrator." Um, and this is, this is kind of important, according to the board, will never give instruction or direction to any staff other than the district administrator. The board will not evaluate any staff member other than the district administrator. And then, except for stating its values through policy and fulfilling any statutory or contractual mandates regarding such matters, the board will refrain from participating in decisions or actions involving the hiring, evaluating, disciplining, or dismissing any employee other than the district administrator. And the inter, interpretation is, um, that the board is only accountable to the district administrator, all staff conduct and district operations are accountable to the district administrator. And all board members and the district administrator, um, were contacted and asked for any violations. There were no violations found with regards to this policy. And I, I guess, is, is there any discussion on strengths or weaknesses, um, of this policy? If you'd like to bring it up. Okay, I'd like, uh, put a motion on the floor that, uh, B/SR, no, there's a motion on the floor, B/SR3 monitoring tool, uh, be, be accepted as presented.
So, yeah, both compliance.
Both compliance, yep.
So.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Governance policy, GP3, governing, governing style. Um, again, this is a, this is a pretty strong document, and it, and it really defines the board's responsibility. And I think, you know, we talked about the fiduciary responsibilities of, uh, you know, CWCA, governance council. These are the same guidelines by which we, we are forced to operate. And it's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, we have some pretty large responsibilities within the district, and, and this policy covers those. Um, the key things in here, I think, is that the board will cultivate a sense of group responsibility, working in partnership with the district administrator, staff, students, parents, and community. The board will be responsible for excellence in governing, using individual board members' talents and expertise to enhance the board entity, while, while preserving the board's collective judgments and values. Um, the board will conduct the business of meetings using the parliamentary procedures, detail the Robert's rules and orders for small boards. Um, it goes on and on, but it, it really, you know, reinforces that fiduciary responsibility that we as board members have. And it, it's, it's in accordance with our, with our, our, uh, guidelines that we, we spoke of earlier, and I guess, absent any discussion, any discussion, thanks, gentlemen? Um, motion of board to find ourselves in both compliance, uh, with GP3-3 governing style.
So make that motion, second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, we are at policy approval. Um, second and final reading for two policies, um, learning environment/ta, treatment of students OE5, and financial administration OE7. Um, these were policies, one went back to the policy committee, changed in language to reflect actual, actual, uh, practices, and the other one, we just needed some tweaks. So at this point, um, unless there's any objection of them, there's a motion of board to approve policies OE5, learning environment/ta of students, and OE7, financial administration, as presented.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, at this point, we are, other board work, um, there are some documents that were presented to the board for informational purposes only, one being the, uh, pump key elementary school student handbook, um, the other, the AMS, AMS behavioral, behavior plan, um.
Let me, I think we, John, do you wanna speak, too?
Sure.
Did you have anything you wanna share? And then I know Clint and Brian wanna share on the AMS, if that's okay.
Very good.
Um, you know, briefly, I'll just say, you know, in terms of looking at our handbook, it really is, it's not a student handbook, so it's like a parent handbook. So we take that mentality of just providing, here are the things that you want to know to help you guide your, um, partnership with us. So it's, it's just, these are the things that you want to know, the little nuts and bolts, and, um, how to help guide their students into a building. And I, I, before I send that, before they get that in their hands to us, we'll send back a welcome letter to say, here's the other little things you know to help run, to make it you familiar with school. The parent handbook is like, okay, these are the routines that you want to know to help guide you, and so that's really the gist of it.
Sure.
And we, we put in a general thing that we're required to as principals, so the parents know also, so that's what we're supposed to do.
And I did note that you are gonna be combining the parent advisory group with the existing parent organization, and that's kind of a, you know, kind of a natural.
Yeah, next week, Monday, in fact, uh, we had left off at the end of the year, and just because we had HEPO, parent advisory board, and really what ended up happening is HEPO folks are saying, you know, that's really what we wanna be doing, too. It's like, I wanna be doing this, too. So we've been on this journey to, to bring these groups together, and we're meeting next week, Monday, to take that next step, and we don't really know for sure because we're working on that vision together, and, you know, having that met since May, we've gotta take the next step in that journey, probably just begin by recalling and deciding what that's gonna look like. But our goal is to really, to create a situation that allows our parents to be partners, and really be a parent-teacher organization, where we have members of our staff and our community working together, you know, kind of what we just talked about in the previous governance panel, to help drive our work forward and be partners with us, as opposed to just saying, hey, here's what we're doing. No, give us your thoughts, what, you know, where do you wanna see us be? And so that's, that's what we're working, and that's a part of that.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty, a very important aspect of that, of that change, so, thank you very much for that, that summary. Um, Mr., Mr. Rock.
Yeah. Um, I come to you today, you know, fresh off of the second day of our responsive classroom training, which is very exciting, and we've had some deep discussions in which Brian and Nathan have been a part of, and Terry's been a, a part of, too. Um, you know, we, we provided with, for you a copy of really the preventative measures of a behavior plan that, that was generated with community input, with guest teacher input, student input, teacher input, uh, but really, a big piece of that behavior plan is the preventative measures as well as the reactive measures, and there's a balance there. And what we're digging into right now in our training is a lot of those preventative measures, and really what, you know, we call tier one, um, solid practices, and make sure that we're building that system of solid practices, and then those reactive measures feed into that system. Uh, in, in responsive classroom, you know, the basis of responsive classroom is an advisory, where you give the kids a, a sense of belonging, significance, and fun. And really, that's the basis in which, um, the responsive classroom approach, and I, approach is the, we talked about that, the responsive classroom approach, being called an approach, it's, it's not just the advisory, it's not just teacher language, it's not just interactive modeling, it's all those things working in a symbiotic relationship. I'm gonna quote our trainer on that. And really, um, 'cause, 'cause they build and feed off of one another. And really, it's all around getting kids those, that basic belonging significance and fun in terms to move them forward socially and academically, and really provide, like I said, the strengthening of, of a, of a very strong social and academic system. You know, we talk about social competencies and academic competencies in that course, and really dig into how we can, how we can, uh, bring them alive in our everyday teaching and planning.
So he kinda explained the overall, but what I did is I met with Clint then and actually took some of those ideas and everything, and we're actually turning those into action steps then. How do we make that happen? So kind of some of the tasks we're gonna work on this year, so from that group, you're gonna look at your teachers, and you're gonna kind of create a committee, and we're calling it two to make this a system, so we know what our tier one supports are, our tier two and tier three are. You're gonna have a committee that's gonna meet on a weekly basis, and they're gonna work on writing the handbook that says, here's our tier one practices, and this is what the expectation is. And then as part of that as well, we're gonna create fidelity checks. So like he talked about the teacher language, the advisory, um, can't remember the third, interactive modeling. So they're gonna go in and do observations and give teachers back, because this is a new process this year. We need to support teachers, give them feedback, and say, here's what's going well, here's something you can work on, and just giving that coaching piece. So we're gonna create those checks, so that way we're nurturing it as we're putting it into place. And then also, two.
And with those checks, you know, focusing on process, you know, making sure that those processes are in place, that we're using some of those, uh, that interactive modeling and using some of that, uh, the interactive learning structures and, and coaching towards making that process seamless. You know, it's not necessarily going in there and saying, oh, you're not doing that, you're not doing that, you are doing that, it's, here, we've seen these positive things connected with these practices, and here's how, here's the advice we have on, on making that more solid, more systematic.
How often will, uh, a, a staff member have an opportunity to be observed and then provide, uh, you know, to ask for help and, and things like that? How often is that gonna happen?
Between, between the beginning of the year and November 22nd, each teacher will be observed five times.
Oh, okay, that's a lot, okay.
Well, and it's not just myself doing the observations and coaching, it's Cory Anson, our guidance counselor, and John Thomas, our assistant principal, and teaming up and saying, okay, we've gotta, we've gotta provide feedback and coaching to all these individuals that have advisories in there.
Is, and so, uh, I mean, it, that's a lot of touch points, so that's, I mean, that's doable? It's doable for you guys?
It's doable, it's a, it's a challenge, but it's doable.
Okay.
Can I elaborate, and then I'll take your questions out?
Sure.
And part of that, too, is when they do the observations at first, I'm gonna also be there, but then we're gonna do it in pairs, because, you know, if Clint is seeing one thing and I'm seeing a different thing, how are we making sure we're giving consistent messages to staff? Because I don't want them to have, well, Cory tells me this, Clint tells me this, John, we're gonna do it in pairs to get greater fidelity as well, to make sure we're saying the same things, we're giving similar feedback, so staff isn't getting separate messages.
Sure, good.
Go ahead, Pat, say.
So if I understand this right, this is about building team?
Yeah.
Family relationships with kids, yeah.
Building team, so the teacher's no longer totally responsible on their own for the results, the team is?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's part of our task, too. So as I go down further, it's creating the handbook, and like I said, that's one of the tasks we're gonna do within committee, and then you're gonna have the fidelity checks, but also two, to address your team question, and then I'll go back to another point.
Okay.
Another skill that we're gonna work on is looking at our referral data as it comes in, because what Cory is doing this year, he's creating a schedule of topics that we're gonna cover during advisory. So like if it's bullying prevention month, or it's suicide prevention month, he's gonna give three weeks' worth of kind of lessons to help teachers give them ideas of what to be talking about in advisory. But that fourth week, during that third week, we're gonna meet with teachers and just go over their office referral data and look at it as the team. And then that fourth week, that's where they, as a team, get to decide, oh, if they have high. high incidences in, say, tardiness, okay, how are we going to do advisory and coach our kids about, okay, how do we address this tardiness challenge together as a team? So we're going to help them start looking at that office referral data to see, are we seeing changes as we go forward? And then, two, part of, one of their staff meetings a month, they're going to look at the data as a whole school and say, what are our challenges? And kind of taking ownership together. So it's going to be multiple, but that's part of our to-do list is, look at that as a whole, look as a team, and kind of, all of us take ownership, how are we going to address this?
Well, and a fairly deep conversation today and yesterday, you know, we were talking about that team approach to, it's got to be all of us creating this system and all of us having input on this, you know, and John Thomas, you know, asked yesterday, he's like, what do you guys think of that? That unit plan that, you know, Brian talked about, Corey working on, and they said that would be a great resource and a great support, and bring some of that systemness to how we're going to approach this.
My thought is if I'm a teacher, and I know, and even if I'm struggling and things don't look good, I'm going to be, I would be happy with this because I, you know, would think, okay, I got a support system behind me.
Right.
And they're not here just to tell me, okay, this is what you're doing wrong, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
They're here to find a solution for me and help me through it.
Yeah.
Well, and we've got to focus on strengths as well, just like we want teachers to focus on the strengths.
Right, right.
And all of them have very good strengths that they're, that can be utilized within different strategies in this.
But I'm just saying, Clint, if I'm a teacher that's struggling with something, I'm not going to beat myself up because I'm struggling, because I know, hey, they got my back.
Correct.
Okay.
And then.
This sounds good.
The other part two that they're working on, well, Corey's going to work on this, he's going to have that schedule, but he's going to work on creating an online resource finder, so if the topic is bullying prevention month, okay, you have the three weeks, and we're going to talk bullying prevention, okay, what if I don't know how to teach bullying prevention? Or what are ideas do I have? He's going to work on an online resource that has all these different lessons and things like that for teachers to pull from, to say, okay, here are ideas, here's acting out activity, here's a writing activity, here's a talking activity. So that way, too, it's not doing the same thing for three weeks, you have different activities to pull from. So that way, they're not like, okay, I don't know how to teach this. Here's a lesson, here's some ideas, here's a bank for you to pull from. But that way, to the team, if you're all doing the same thing as well, you can pull from each other. How did you do it today? How did you do it today? You can get those ideas going. So that's just kind of some of our action steps to take that idea, and now let's get a system to it. So we're going to create the handbook, the units, a resource finder, and then go over data with teams. So that fourth week, we're kind of doing focused advisories, where we're looking at your data and saying, okay, where are your students struggling? How can we support them? So.
It's exciting stuff.
So if you have a chance, in the next couple of days, they're going to be at the middle school from.
We're in the CWSA space, eight oh five, eight oh six.
So the next three days, actually?
Yep. Well, Friday, we're doing support staff.
Oh, there's going to be there.
Eight to three thirty every day. Or sorry, eight to three. Although we did go to three thirty today because we were in deep discussion.
Wow, that's a good sound.
It sounded like there's a lot of great work going on, and, you know, I had the opportunity this summer to sit on some of those meetings that, you know, worked on the consequences aspect. But, you know, it sounds like we're not going to really have a lot of information for, you know, teacher empowerment to start with, or, you know, informing parents about, you know, what our practices are going to be.
Well.
You know, where does that linkage? Are we going to be, you know, waiting until next year before parents are.
No, one step of that is John and I already have lots of time advertised to parents for open house, and that we're going to be putting together a little half hour presentation and as one effort to try to communicate that to parents.
That's a good idea.
So that's the start of it. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You got their wheels turning, you got to tell.
My wheels are coming too.
I like it, I like it.
Very good, we're up to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to mention with regards to the consent agenda? Any comments?
Clint, do you want to say anything about Jennifer Rock? She, I know she's served in the district for many years.
Yeah. Jenny said, you know, she, that she's very pleased with her experience at the middle school, and she's, she wants to leave on good terms, and after her period of time has expired, for a lot of period of time, she'd like to be on the sub list, and she just said that, you know, now is the right time for her to be with her family, and she said, I can start the year if you don't have anybody, and, I mean, everything was just very, I mean, if somebody is going to depart, that's the way you want it to happen, you know.
I think we'd like to recognize her for her contributions to our district over the years.
Yeah.
Was it twenty-eight years?
I'm not sure.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five or almost twenty-five, so she would probably know what to think. And there was, there's been a lot of.
What's in, is it in here?
It's in there. She's been super to work with since I've been there, and just a very high quality employee that I'm happy that she's wanting to continue to serve in some capacity.
We'd just like to recognize her for, you know, what she's done for our children, our community, and wish her the very best. Fantastic. Donations, any other comments?
Would you like me to read them?
Sure.
First Congregational Church, two hundred and fifty dollars for a essential closet, backpack for kids at Wisconsin River Garden Club, two hundred and twenty dollars, and Sacred Heart Collections, forty-five dollars.
Thank you for those donations, they're very important. The Backpack for Kids program is something that is just core to helping some of our students and families, so thank you very much. Any other comments on consent agenda? If not, I'd like to.
So are we, are we looking still to replace Jennifer? Or do we have someone?
We're doing interviews.
You're doing interviews.
Yep.
Are you looking for a motion to?
Yep, we're going to put a motion to approve that consent agenda.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Future meetings slash dead items, Board Workshop, August tenth, six P M. August tenth is passed. It's not a future meeting, it's a past meeting. Is that date wrong? August tenth?
It should be September.
September tenth would be assumed. It's set a Thursday.
It's a Thursday before the nineteenth.
Okay, very good, very good. We got that changed.
It would be the fourteenth.
Fourteenth. You know, just some important times for us with the new teacher orientations, and the, I didn't, it came in an email, but can somebody just review the dates, the keynote speaker?
I'd be happy to, let me call it up there.
We're going to have a keynote speaker on the first day of.
On the twenty-ninth. Yeah, and please watch, watch those kindness diaries. I mean, they will hook you.
They're on Netflix. Yeah, they're on Netflix. The keynote speaker has a Netflix.
Leon Logathetus. So if you haven't had a chance to look at those Netflix, is anybody, did you get hooked to?
Is that something you sent us?
Uh, yes.
One two.
Yeah.
You really want me to say it again? Leon Logathetus.
Would you like me to iterate it?
Probably can.
Just some important dates that.
Well, it's coming out tomorrow in your update.
It'll be in our.
You'll be hearing update tomorrow.
Important dates that, you know, if we can make it, we're sure like. And at this point, we're at that time. Agreed.
Any other upcoming topics to cover?
I think we're good.
We do have, I would like to share that, you know, the work that we've been doing with the city. You know, there's going to be some upcoming public dates for that, but the city is now moving forward on, what is it, August twenty-fourth? They're having their first strategic planning meeting as a group, so we've got about thirty people that have been invited for some city planning. And so that came out of one of our last meetings. And then also, Brian, you want to talk a little bit about city rec? I keep putting you on the spot on this.
Yeah. We are finalizing our first kickball tournament, we're going to be hosting in September, and we're hoping to piggyback off of that into some winter activities and just hoping for some good community support.
Get some more ideas on that.
No, that's, actually, that's put that on there.
The end result, the work we've done with the city, I think, is there's going to be some benefits, I guess, that we're symbiotic relationship, you know, we're working together. We're ahead of the curve, more communities are beginning to do this, but, you know, large cost to taxpayers are stakeholders, are our city governments and our schools, so we need to work together. Very quick things to come up.
So what is the board's thinking on, so I had talked to the mayor, and he had shared, and we had met with Peter Manley from UW Extension. So Peter Manley's facilitating this strategic planning. But, so this committee's meeting in August, when would the board like to have the next joint meeting? Would September make sense? They're, the city planning, they're, we're calling it a city, community planning meeting instead of strategic planning, it just feels better, I guess, but, so they're going to be meeting monthly through January, so it would require the city people and the school board people that are on that committee to, you know, meet an extra time during the month. But so should we shoot for September to do an update on?
I think we, even if it's not the sole topic, it's, we should be, we should meet.
So joint meeting in September?
Yep.
Then the other thing too that got brought up is several people have said, when are we getting back together with the area board, other area school boards? So anybody have thoughts on that?
We need to initiate a consortium again. Consortium.
Anybody have an idea when we should do that? We could do it in conjunction with that meeting we go to in Rothschild?
Yeah, it's in October, I think.
What if we did, what if we'd met like an hour before that? You don't think they would do that?
I think you should work with the other superintendents.
I agree with them.
So when would be a good time?
He has a dinner there for that.
Well, I'd say, but if we'd met an hour sooner, it's the other.
Either that, or if you wanted to meet like after that. No, who knows, too late.
No, no, I'm not saying during that day, I'm saying pick a date after.
Like November.
Right, pick a date after, then you can discuss what was, what you took away from that. Okay. No, I'm not saying. Well, I'll talk to them, see what they have for anything else.
Hopefully, they're open for a very healthy, healthy discussion.
All right.
Any other things on the agenda that we want to talk about?
Drop, can you talk?
Just, I don't know. Well, we're, I don't know if that's record time, but.
I moved to a chair.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.